Good evening and welcome to the Norwood School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, August 27, 2024. We are coming to you this evening from this school committee room in the Savage Center. In attendance this evening is Ms. Kate Sibbing Dunn, Mr. David Hiltz, and myself. Not in attendance this evening will be Ms. Teresa Stewart and Dr. Joan Giblin. Can I ask all those in attendance to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so our first item on the agenda is actually Executive Session. We will need to go into Executive Session for the purpose of contract discussions, for contract negotiations, for Unions, Unit A, Unit B, and Food Services. Do I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
So moved.
Moved by David, seconded by Kate, and I'll poll individually. Kate?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we will return at approximately 7:00 PM, and we will be back to you live. Welcome back to the School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, August 28. I had to think about 27, thank you. We've just returned from Executive Session. We will now restart our open session. The first item of the agenda on our open session agenda, English, Amory, is approval of minutes. We have several sets of minutes in our packets this evening. We have three sets of minutes from our open sessions on June 12, July 10, and July 24. We also have Executive Session minutes from June 24, July 10, and July 24. Do we want to, so we were just kind of discussing, do we want to take these separately so that we're, for ones where people were present, or David, you said you're comfortable voting?
Yes.
For ones that...
I was going to make a motion to approve the open session minutes from June 12, July 10, and July 24, as well as the June 24, July 10, and July 24 Executive Session minutes.
Do I have a second?
I just have a friendly amendment because I did look, and it just needs to note that I left for the second portion of the Executive Session on the 24th. I'm sorry, Donna, if you said you had it, I just need, I didn't see that. Okay.
Any other discussion around the minutes? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes three to zero. Alrighty, so the next item on our agenda is correspondence. Mr. Love, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Great, so we'll move right on. I have a point of order for myself. So warrant report. I did not sign the warrants before this meeting, but I do have them and could sign it this very second. Is that appropriate to read those into the, into the record?
If you feel comfortable with that, you can.
I think that is a good way to do it, since we do sign those electronically. Alright, so this week, the warrants to be read into the record are in the amounts of $1,413,072.29, $11,451.97, $4,078.44, $238,877.45, $28,822.25, $24,330.91, and $38,304.35, and $570,726.22, for a grand total of $5,311,401.13. Are there any questions on the warrant this evening? Great. Alright, so moving on, not listed in the agenda, but we do always offer a public comment period during our meetings. We just missed it in the actual written agenda, unfortunately. So now would be the time for public comment. A reminder to the public that you can access public comment in a couple of different ways. When we are having a hybrid meeting, you can access by coming to the Savage Center and signing in here at the, in the meeting room. You can also call the Superintendent's Office by noon the day of our meeting to get a remote link, or to put yourself onto the list of speakers for public comment. Has anyone pre-signed for public comment this evening?
They have not.
Is anyone here for public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will declare public comment closed at 7:01 PM. Alright, so moving right on to our next item is our Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So I have a few things tonight. The first thing that I want to do is introduce Mr. John Phelan, who is my NSIP coach, the Superintendent's Induction Program Coach. As you all remember, John, could you just give a little, John is a former superintendent of Belmont and has a significant amount of educational experience, and I'm excited to have him as my coach for the program. Just as a reminder, you have provided me the opportunity to participate in the program, which is a three-year program, decided one year at a time. The first year of the program, I work with John, a bunch of other superintendents, new superintendents to go through and develop an entry plan. So what you'll see tonight in just a minute is an entry plan that I have developed, a process that I'm going to follow for the next year, that allows me to collect data from the district, through interview processes, through data analysis, and then create a plan for entry. As a reminder, this process is set up in the way we agreed to it, is the first year is the entry plan process, where we're collecting the data and presenting you with entry findings towards the end of the year. That then leads into a new strategic plan development. So I know that the committee is very eager with a one-year bridge plan right now to have something in place for next year. This process doesn't quite lay that out. So there may be a case where we are doing another bridge plan based on all the data that we get and we have, but the findings are going to provide an extreme amount, a good amount of information for us to do that before we launch into a five-year full-fledged strategic plan. But with that, I will open my memo. Now, I also noticed that in this school committee agenda, I have provided a tremendous amount of memos with links to the particular documents that are in here. So pretty much what I just shared with you is what is in the memo. But you'll see the entry plan here itself. It really goes through an introduction of myself and the values that I have and that I will always lead with. It then goes through the actual purpose of the, of the entry plan, which obviously is to ease my transition into the role, data collection and analysis. Here are some of the data that I will be kind of going through, contracts, the policy manual, the strategic plan, the MOAs, the MOUs, the budget, capital outlay, financial audits, and more and more and more. You'll see there's a significant amount of data review there. If there are items that are not on this list that you can think of, please let me know what those might be, what I missed, and say, hey, Tim, you really should look at this document too because it's something that will really help you understand the district more. Significant component of this is stakeholder engagement, and there's numerous groups of incredible constituents in town. So I want to make sure that I focus my efforts to ensure that I'm interviewing everyone that I can. You'll see the specific focus questions that I ask, and if you've already had the opportunity to interview with me, I ask the question, you know, what are the strengths of the Norwood Public Schools? What are those items that should not be changed by me as I step in, you know, and if it's more informal meeting, you know, it's kind of a, you know, what shouldn't Tim touch, kind of a thing? What are the areas that I should be considering upon entry? So there's areas of focus, there's areas of need. And then finally, depending on who it is, if it's the staff, I say, what's one thing, if accomplished by me at the end of the year, would blow your mind? And if it's, you know, it's somebody in the community, it might say, what would something that would be considered a great success in your mind that could be accomplished in year one? Obviously, there are a tremendous amount of individual interviews that I'll create and do in this process, and I've met with many folks already, from the school committee to this administration, to the teachers, to the union leaders, to the boards in town, town manager, fire chief, police chief, I've already done a lot of these folks already. And finally, I will do a thought exchange of ideas between among the community, just to ensure that I can get a vast array of feedback from everyone with the same questions there. I will have some coffee hours, as you know, as you've probably seen, to actually meet with folks on the outside. I'm also going to be doing planning and norm setting with the admin team, as well as the school committee, which we've already done some of that work. We had a fantastic administrative team retreat this last week. I'll share a little bit more about that later. But really getting us all on the same page for how we're going to function throughout the year, so that data can come in a fluid way, and then we can use it in a findings, a report of findings to you in the spring. And the community presence. I have scheduled visits to at least two schools per week, which gives me the opportunity to be at least at minimum in a school, every school in a month. That's the goal. Obviously, I'll be in schools more than that, as I shared with you in the interview process. I find that actually, come on, I find that actually being in the schools, seeing teachers, seeing staff, seeing everyone is how I get the real feedback, and they develop a comfort level with me, too. And that really helped, that's really helpful. I will be scheduled on a community event a week, so looking forward to Norwood Days here on, I think it's Saturday the 5th, is that right?
Seven.
Saturday the 7th?
Yeah.
So I'll be here on both days, obviously, one for work and one for Norwood Days. It'll be good. And I will coordinate with all the district, with the leaders to make sure that I can be included in parent meetings, PTOs, CPAC, LPAC, those kind of coordinations as well. So a tremendous amount going on. There is a timeline here, too, a draft timeline, like with anything else, timelines are subject to change. But obviously, you know, I've already begun working on the plan writing, sharing it with you, the thought exchange and surveys, the document reviews in July to October, individual interviews I began first thing. Actually, I say July here, I think I started probably in May. I feel like I started in May with speaking some principals. We'll do some calendar setting with the administration, which we've been doing, obviously, the schedule of community visits, the site visits. The analysis will really begin from November to December, and I'll analyze all that data. I'll report on some emerging themes to you, so you kind of know what's happening, what I'm finding so far. And then I'll have a draft report of entry findings that should be complete by February, and then I'll provide those to you in February as well, the actual report of findings, and then to the community in March. And then with stakeholders, we'll start talking about the strategic plan, right, based on the findings of that report. So really excited for the process. I think it's going to be enlightening to learn more and more about Norwood. I'm so excited to be here, as I've shared so many times. And with that, I will take any questions you have about this plan or the Superintendent Induction Program process as we move forward.
So I do have just one question because this is my first new superintendent. And I think we've kind of touched on this before in just discussions, but so obviously, it looks like, you know, the presentation of the entry plan comes in around March-ish. So how, so how does this play into things like superintendent goals, right? So does that mean that we get the entry plan this year, and then we don't do goal setting until the following year? Like how does, where, yeah, so where does it kind of fit in?
So I will...
Not that I'm in love with doing the goals, because the SMART goals thing just kills me.
No, that's okay. They're one of the goals that when we meet together to have a conversation about goals, my understanding is we'll have a smaller group, meet with me about my goal development. That will still be early on, actually soon. One of the plans will be to complete an entry plan, right? So that's kind of what the goal is, so that'll be that. This will help in terms of evaluating that entry plan when you're evaluating my progress at the end. But that's just one of the number of goals that you'll assign me, or will collaboratively work together on.
Right.
That'll be one.
I think what I was trying to kind of get in my own mind is previously, we had done goal setting in the spring, right? Or did we do, yes, correct? Like May-ish?
You mean school committee goal setting, or do you mean superintendent?
Superintendent goal setting.
Oh, oh, you mean for the upcoming school year?
Correct. So that's why I was just kind of trying to see how, this year, I totally get it, totally makes sense to me. But this, with the entry plan coming on in the spring, like is it, then we would go forward with goal setting in the, you know, a couple months later? Like it just does, it seems like an awfully tight timeline, or how do they fit in together in a?
Well, I'm very, I'm very comfortable with kind of the goal setting process, even if we in September sit down and we decide what my goals are going to be. I mean, this one's already started, right? So that's the one that's going to be very easy to put into play. Obviously, you have a 360 evaluation tool that we'll have to create, I think, in February, so that's going to go out. And then I have no problem being evaluated in the spring. I think based on, depending on the goals that we finalize, this one is one that is certainly already in action and incorporates so many other things that you'll probably ask of me, so I don't mind the shortened time.
I think I'm just thinking ahead, and I'm probably getting way ahead of myself, and we can talk about that another time. But it was, it was more about next years, and making sure that, I was just kind of, just trying to see how that all fits in.
Sorry, I feel like we talked about this briefly. Am I thinking of something else where you and Joan said you would be?
No, we were going to do that, but that was for Dave. But this is now this year, and I think that everyone knows my feelings on the educator eval system, how useless it is. It's not to say that...
That's not my favorite.
But...
I would say, yeah, that's fine. Might be a tight timeline, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure it out. I probably, like I said, I'm probably just being type A and thinking like way too far ahead. But yeah, no, I think this year absolutely makes sense because you can't really set goals before you, before you're here. So it has to be this way. And of course, the entry plan is the biggest, the piece of that.
Yep.
I just had one thing that we'll probably touch on more later, but I know you reached out to the community about the elementary study, and there's going to be a survey specifically about that. And I was just, wanted to clarify, I'm guessing that you'll be distinguishing sort of your get-to-know-the-community outreach from that. I only bring it up because, you know, folks tend to get confused or easily, sometimes, you know, they're like, which one is this? Or, so just, you know, I'm, I'm sure you'll make sure that it's, there's clarity around what people are giving input on, or who that...
There will be, and likely I will not do the community survey until the elementary study survey is closed, so we're not...
That will help. That will help. Great. I think it looks, I think it looks great. You've covered a lot of stakeholders and a lot of resources, so it looks, looks good to me.
And I'm not requesting any action on this at this time. It's just a matter for your purview to take a look at and get understanding of what I'm, what I'm going to, the process I'm going to follow to get acquainted.
Sounds good. Great. Did anyone else just hear that? I squeaked. Sorry. I'm trying really hard. If anyone, my voice is not the greatest. Any other questions on the entry plan or the NSIP process? Do you have anything else under that?
I do. Just quickly, I wanted to share with you a picture of the administrative team as they were together at our event retreat Thursday and Friday. We were at an offsite. It was a lovely location, and we want to thank the town and Mr. Mazooko for actually purchasing and paying for that space for us. I got some incredible feedback from, from the administrators, things like they felt like they were being treated like professionals, and really a kickstart of the year. Well, I personally purchased them all those vests that they have in there. I wanted to, you know, gift something to them from me, and so they really all felt like they joined as a team, and so it was really nice. Now, they did go through a couple things. You can see here, I put them through a thought exchange on, you know, what are those big priorities in the strategic plan that you think are important, you know, in the bridge plan that you're thinking important this year? And I told them to choose, they could only choose five, because I wanted those top five to be focused on. And you can see here, there's several key areas they, they looked at, enhancing student engagement, attendance, consistent protocols and practices, particularly in reading instruction, utilizing data and analytic view for informed teaching decisions, strong emphasis on cooperative learning structures, professional development, common planning time, SCL and trauma-informed practices, along with restorative practices to improve student behavior. Additionally, there's a call for effective teaching strategies, especially in inclusive settings, and coaching to foster a more inclusive and culturally responsive teaching environment. Now, I always say that I want to do something fun at the school committee, so Thought Exchange also has a fun mode to it. And so I have a poem that was created based on this, this activity. I told the principals that I would actually read it, so I will. Here we go. "In our district, your voices ring clear with thoughts and ideas that we hold dear. From student engagement to SCL's embrace, together we'll make this a thriving place. Protocols and practices consistent and strong. Reading instruction, where all students belong. Data to guide us, analytic views might. Informed teaching choices shining so bright. Cooperative learning, a structure so grand. PD and CPT will lend a hand. Restorative practices a kinder way for a safe, creative, and positive day." Restorative practices a kinder way for a safe, creative, and positive day. That was repeated, I'm just saying. "Your feedback is vital, your insight's profound. In every classroom, let progress resound. Together we'll build, together we'll grow. With your wisdom, our district will glow." So that was kind of a, an overall from their comments and thoughts, and it was just really nice. So they enjoyed that, too, at the end, so I just wanted to share that with you. It was a great retreat. We went through everything from legal policy to team building to, to operations. Everybody, every department did a quick update. JJ led some incredible professional developments. We just did some wonderful things, and I think it's going to really go a long way in getting them prepped for the year, and excited for the team that we have in place. So it was lovely. Yeah, that's all I have for that. I do have a quick update on enrollment numbers, just some enrollment. Not detailed, but I did want to let the committee know, no action on your part, but between July and August, we've had 266 registrations. Thirty-three of those students are, were students with IEPs. Fourteen of those students are high need students. So just as a, how I asked Lori to define high need for me was requiring some kind of a, a program in one of our schools or out of district and/or one-to-one. So fourteen of those students were high need. So we're managing right now. Obviously, we have the structures in place. You've created wonderful programs and funded them, so to place these students where they, where they need to be. But I do want to regularly give the committee an update on, on enrollments if they're, if they're big numbers, so.
Do you know how many of those were out of district? Just curiously, because that's usual, that's, that's our budget buster, right?
I, I actually don't think any are going to go. Maybe one is going to be out of district. I don't, I would, I would bring it to you if I thought it was a budget impact. I do not see that as a budget impact right now.
When we see people, you know, move the summer move-ins, which is typical, right? That's when people move, typically before COVID. People would move in the summertime, and that's perfectly normal. And but obviously, in recent years, we would see quite a high number that needed out-of-district placement, and that was what was pretty much, yeah, or after, after September hit even. So yeah, of course, it's a little, little bit of PTSD.
And it's a perfect segue into when you're ready for Mr. Mannion's report, because he had a buddy's update, and we'll talk about some of the circuit, the good circuit breaker number actually that we have, too. So that's good.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Great. Any questions before we move on? Alright. Next item on the agenda is budget. And the first under that is the budget subcommittee update. I don't know if you, do you want to get, give a quick update, or do you want me to just kind of briefly go over?
Go ahead.
Sure. So we actually, it was just myself, Mr. Love, Mr. Mannion. I'm trying to remember if anybody else actually joined. Who else joined?
Member of the community, I think.
Sarah?
Sarah.
Oh, Sarah, and of course, and Sarah. That's who I was missing. I knew I was missing somebody. Mr. Stewart was not able to join us for that meeting. So it was, it was actually, it was a good meeting, so it kind of geared us back up for the school year. We discussed pretty much everything that Mr. Mannion is going to go over, so I won't take up too much time. We did not schedule another meeting yet. We definitely need to schedule another one and get on our regular cadence of budget subcommittee meetings. So as soon as we can get Ms. Stewart back to, in the fold, we'll get those...
Scheduled.
Scheduled. And that's it. It's a very short and brief, because I will not take away your thunder. So yeah, so the next item after that is the end of the year report.
Alright, so thanks for having me. It's been an exciting two months here. I've been on a steep learning drive to learn the finances and operations for the school district here. This is a report on the year ending FY '24, fourth quarter report. And I'm happy to report that the district is ending in a good financial position, and it's ending similar to what was expected in the third quarter. So the first slide is just a very top overall summary. The school budget is $54.8 million, and at this point, $54.5 million has been expended, and we have a small number of encumbrances that we anticipate carrying forward, about $344,000, ending the year at $54.8 million, which leaves a small balance to return to the town of $879. The budget's expected to be, for the most part, 100% expended. And then I just added a second line because we will, we are anticipating to carry forward in the circuit breaker line, 2.9 million. That's the primary mechanism that school districts use to carry forward what's balanced at the end of the year, because you are by law allowed to carry forward up to one year's worth of circuit breaker. And so at this point, we are anticipating a carry forward of about 2.9 million. Now, I may add a few caveats to that at the very end of this presentation, but I can go forward. So this slide is a summary of what was spent for the year by the various DESE functions. So in the fall, we have to do a report to the Department of Ed that reports on all spending for the school district. We actually have to report on grants, spending by the town, spending by the district. This is just the district operating budget, and it's broken down into cost DESE functional areas. 1,000s are district leadership and administration, 2,000 is instructional services, which is teaching and PD. 3,000 is other school services, including medical, OTPT. 4,000 is operations and maintenance. 5,000 is benefit and fixed charges. Community services is 6,000s, and 9,000s are other types of programs. So as you can expect in a school district, about 80% of the costs are on the instructional services line, because that's where the teaching salaries are. The next largest category is the other school services at about 9%, and then administration, which is just under 3%. Benefits and fixed charges are very low because the town covers the benefits here in Norwood, so very small on that portion. Community service is very low. And then other programs, which does include out-of-district tuition, is about 7%. So this slide is a, is a different way of looking at it, which is what they call the DESE programs, general ed, special ed, English learners. And so we took, the top is the expenditure. So that's everything that's not payroll. So that would include all supplies, contractors, tuition payments. And you can see, when you look at the expense areas, the non-payroll areas, special education is about 58%. General education is about 52%. That's because of special ed transportation and tuition charges that make that area bigger as far as the expense area. From the payroll, which is the second portion, you can see 67% general education, 29% special education. Again, payroll overall is going to be the largest portion, because when you look at the very bottom, the third tier, you'll see payrolls, 85% of the district expenditures, and the expenses are about 15%. So now we're going to look at a few slides that are funding sources. So this slide was carried over from third quarter. I didn't want to change things too much right off the bat, so we did our best to just fill in this money. I'm not exactly sure on what the reasoning was for just these certain items, but it is helpful to think of. So what you'll see is the general fund, the operating budget, as we reported, almost fully spent at $54.8 million. We do have a revolving account that's for non-resident tuition. So this is when a student from another district comes to Norwood and is educated, and they do, that, they are, they do pay Norwood for that education. So we, we usually get one or two students, and this is for the year ending FY '24. So we did have revenue of $47,000 there that we did not spend. So that $47,000 will be available to us, because revolving funds typically carry over. funds typically carry over. Circuit breaker, which is a large state funding source, as I mentioned, is, will be carrying over 2.9 million. We have a sped stabilization fund that was set up that has $700,000. We did not use that at all during this year, so we, we do have 700,000 that will carry forward into FY25. And then there were two town warrant articles. I'll, I'll show a few more of those on the next slide, but two to call out. One was for pupil transportation. It was 500,000. We spent 290,000, so we have about 210,000 left. And the other one was for special education tuition and transportation, 1.8 million, and that was fully spent. I can talk more about the, the transportation warrant article on the next one. So this slide shows all of the town warrant articles, because this was helpful for me coming in, because I'm new, that, it's a little new to me. So what I did was I looked at all the town warrant articles that are out there, and I separated them into the top, which is warrant items that are fully spent, and then the bottom, which are warrant items that still have balances. So you can see, fully spent, we had the elementary capacity study at 60,000, the special education, out of district tuition and transportation, 1.8 million. We had a school of origin transportation warrant that was set up for transportation for some of the migrant families, and that was at 59,000. And then we had an IT Capital One at 156,000. All of those were fully spent. And then with balances, we have one item, pupil transportation. So we, 500,000, we've spent 290. We have been at Capital Outlay, which we can talk about more, where we have a request at, to Capital Outlay to replace five of our seven mini buses. These aren't the vans, but these are the buses. And we'd like to take this 209,000 and attribute it to that request, which is about 585,000, or at least, you know, recognize that we would return the, these funds, if we can attribute it to the vans, we would return this 210,000, you know, to note that we're still requesting another 585 for the vans, but all within transportation. The superintendent search, which is over, had a balance of 26,000. There's a student services study warrant article for 100,000. I know they're, they're looking at that and how to do an RFP, look for the correct type of vendors, what type of study they want to do. There's a $50,000 warrant item for enrichment pilot, which is coaching for change. We've already spent 35,000 of the 50. We expect that will be fully spent. There was an item to set up the extended day, so this is basically a setup for the rec department, 400,000 to fund them starting up the extended day program. So that, that really goes to the rec department. And then there were two, two that, one for IT emergency connectivity. Joe Kidd will have plans for that, still has a 177,000. And van replacement, which we, these are for vans that were already ordered, and there's just $9,000 left there. So this is a view of circuit breaker, just to discuss one of the big state fundings. So if we look at the year-end circuit breaker, the top shows the revenue, how we got the revenue that we did. So from FY23, we carried over 2.7 million in circuit breaker. That sort of starts the circuit breaker out. Again, you can carry forward up to a year. And then you can see in the current year funds, it's a one-year lag. So in FY24, the reimbursement was based on the FY23 claims, and usually they're done in quarterly payments. And the quarterly payments for our regular circuit breaker in FY24 were 3.7 million. And then Norwood applied for what's called extraordinary relief. This is if you see an increase, a large increase in your out-of-district payments. You can, you can file a claim around February, March, and Norwood did that, and they did receive 611,000, and that must be spent in the fiscal year it's received. And then lastly, you can also apply for what's called reserve relief, which, that is essentially a loan on your next year's circuit breaker. So Norwood did get 504,000. It's basically a prepayment on the FY25 claim. So in my mind, that basically needs to go to make FY25 whole. So then again, when we go back to the carry forward that we're looking at of 2.9 million, a certain amount of that is just the 504,000 that we really need to bring into the next year. When you add all of that up, the total circuit breaker funding available in FY24 was 7.55 million, and then the expenses are below. Typically, it's all tuition expenses. We did journal entries from the operating budget to the circuit breaker of 4.1 million. And then we had some out-of-district tuition placements that were charged directly to circuit breaker, which gives us some flexibility when, when the budget's low, that we can put some costs directly on circuit breaker. So you can see at the end, we've spent 4.6 million, and we're carrying forward 2.9 million. So of the 2.9, 500,000 is really just the loan or prepayment from the reserve relief. So we need to reserve that. And then we did build into the FY25 budget a dependency on some of these funds. So I believe we needed at least 1.4 million of this carry forward to make the FY25 budget whole. So we're still looking at some excess carry forward of maybe a million, which we can use, that'll be available for us as a reserve or for, for things as they come up. So the next slide is specifically about out-of-district tuition, which also, you know, impacts circuit breaker. So when you look at the top, this was the actual budget that was developed on the tuition line. And the budget was developed, you could call these the gross placements or the actual cost of placements. The actual cost of the placements was close to 10 million here in Norwood, so 9.8 million. And then after that, we have circuit breaker credits that offset that cost, and we planned on 5.2 million in circuit breaker, and we also planned in stabilization credits of 1.2 million. So at the end of the day, the budget that you see in the operating budget is 3.3, 3.348 million. Sometimes this can confuse people, but you have to wrap your head around that. The budget for out-of-district tuitions in the operating budget may only be 3.3 million, but the total amount that we're spending is close to 10 million. If we talk in a future year about tuition costs increasing by 10%, that's on 10 million. That's not on 3.3 million. So after that, you see the actual, so actual expenditures were very close to what was budgeted. We spent about 9.7 million on the actual tuition expenses, and we used fewer credits on circuit breaker. So by using less circuit breaker credit than we had planned, we carry forward more circuit breaker that we didn't use, and that's how we're arriving at a larger circuit breaker carry forward than originally planned. The stabilization credits were very close, and so at the end, you can see there is a variance to budget, but it was, it's covered overall, because we are ending in the black. And the variance is due primarily to the fact that we used less circuit breaker, because we could do that and carry forward more. The box at the bottom was some of the information from the third quarter. I didn't have time to verify every single figure, so I carried forward that information from the third quarter, assuming it was correct. This is an update on some of the revolving funds. There's a whole range of revolving and donation funds. Many of them have very small balances, but these are the ones that are big enough to note. There's a number of fee-based revolving accounts, transportation fees, preschool tuition, athletics, extended day, which is being phased out, drama, and music. So when you see the carryover from FY23 column, that's whatever was left in that revolving count at the end of FY23. The revolving accounts just continue to roll each year, so that's what it start, we started FY24 with. The FY24 current year receipts are representative of what one year's receipts are for those fees. And then you can see the total funds available, which is the carry forward plus the receipts, and the expenses or encumbrances, and then the balance. And you can see that the balances that we're carrying forward in these fee-based accounts are pretty close to what the one year's receipts are. So we've got pretty healthy balances in these fee, fee accounts, which is where you want to be. At the end of the, at the end, if, we're at about 1.3 million. Now this extended day really is going away, so we're probably closer to 700, 600,000 here. But we're in a healthy standing on those. Other types of revolving accounts, which we already mentioned, there's a sped reserve of 700,000. We have not spent that, so that continues to be available to us. And there was the non-resident tuition revolving of 47,000, which we also did not spend. And we do anticipate getting that revenue again in FY25. So we should have twice that amount available if we want to spend. Typically, with the non-resident tuition, we could transfer some teaching salaries there if we want to free up other funds. With the extended day, one thing that I can, could, could mention is that it was originally expected that the extended day would end at about $400,000 balance, and that's what they set up the rec department with. So we are thinking about, we could expend some more money on this extended day account before it's closed here. We basically have a day to do that, which would again, which would actually increase our carry forward a little bit more. So if you want to weigh in at the end on that, I mean, we could leave it as it is. Whatever's left in this extended day, the 700,000 is going to go to the town in free cash, because they're going to be set up with their own account.
So what was the, what question were you asking in terms of what does?
Well, on the extended day revolving, the school revolving account is being phased out, and the expectation was that it would end the year with somewhere between 400 and or more thousand dollars, depending on how the year ended. We're actually ending the year with 700,000. So potentially, we could find some expenses, like some teaching salaries or something that we could attribute to the extended day, move it from the operating budget, which we could then put back into the circuit breaker carry forward. So we could, we could carry forward a little bit more in circuit breaker by spending a little bit more on this. Whatever's left here is going to go essentially to the town in free cash. This extended day account that was the school revolving is going to go away, and then the town has already been set up, the rec department is set up with 400,000 on the town warrant article. That's the way it was structured.
But the, the extended day, it's very specific what we can spend on that, correct? Because it's, it's a specific revolving.
It is, it is meant for extended day type purchases, but that can be building supplies. It can be different things that are happening in the building itself, too.
Okay.
It's not limited just to extended day staff, for example. I actually, I talked to...
Yeah, I just...
Yep, yep.
I just know that since it's a revolving funds, like there are, you know, rules specifically about what it can be.
Well, there's plenty of things going on after school, right, in terms of clubs and academic.
Yeah, there's a lot you can tie in to add the after-school program, based on staff that we use to, and I can work with Sean on this too, because that's exactly what we talked about today, you know, what can we tie in to the extended day program that would allow us to carry over some of these funds for next year for other purposes. And what I would, what I guess the question would be is, do we have the blessing to do that, to identify those areas that we can actually fund based on the requirements of the revolver, revolving account, and then do that tomorrow to try to, so as we build our circuit breaker up, up supply next year?
So can I make a motion to give you?
Yeah, I have a question. As long as we're fulfilling our obligation to the town, which it sounds like you're saying that's already covered with...
And they're getting 600,000.
We'd want at least 400,000 to go to free cash to cover the $400,000 worth that we voted on.
Right, yeah, I would say definitely.
Yeah, and Sean's been in touch with the town folks today, too, just had this conversation.
Perfect.
So I would make a motion to give Sean and Tim the authority to, approval authority to look at the budget and find ways to take some of the money out of the revolving fund.
Of course, spend it in, sorry.
Spend it in that fiscal year? Did I say that correctly?
I was gonna say, spend it, it's, I...
What's the verbiage?
Again, I just want to make sure that we're, we're being clear that, you know, with, in accordance with the rules of the revolving fund. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Right, right.
So what you said.
Did you get that out?
Yes.
Well, yeah, it's the extended day revolving fund, right?
Yeah.
And, and look at it and see where you could put some of this, spend some of this money.
Correct.
A second?
And then update us when that happens.
Yeah, we can definitely.
Okay.
Second, Kate?
I do.
Okay. Falls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
The next...
Always a pleasant surprise.
The next three slides are on grants. So this is again through the end of June 30th, FY24. When we look at federal grants, so federal grants can be carried forward typically for up to three years. So when you see the grant year, '22, '23, '24, it's those grants that are 2022 that are the ones that we really have to address. And the main one there is SOR III. I'm going to show a slide at the end, but there's specifically on SOR III. That one is ending as of September 30th. It has a balance of 540,000, but we do expect to be using it completely by the end of September. Other ones to note, the sped IDEA, which is the 240 grant, has 425,000, but that's in the 2024 grant, so that could be carried forward. There, you see the 2022 and 23 grants have been fully spent. Title I has some in '24, and the other amounts are under 50,000, but all of those appear to be in '24 grants. So that's in line with what we expect. And the next slide is the state grants. We've had some small, there's been a flurry of activities on state grants. The state grant deadline usually is on June 30th, and you have until July 30th to spend them. Some of these, we actually tried to, to use as much of the funds as we could, but because of the transition, it, it was a bit of a scramble when I came in. I mean, the, the largest thing here is this expanded learning, and I, I really looked into the 64,000, and the DESE basically, it was a grant that was specifically for summer of 2023, and that, that window had closed for us, maybe even in February, which some, some people, I've asked around, and they said that that was what they had heard back then anyway. So we did our best on that. So the last is an SOR III update. The grant began in FY22. Final, final spending must be obligated by September 30th, but they give you a window all the way to December to spend it down. So as long as you have a PO for supplies or contractors that's in place by September 30th, the services or goods can be received after that. The balance as of June was 540,000, but even since this report in, in the next fiscal year, since the summer's already kicking off, we've already been spending a lot of SOR III. So we definitely expect it's going to be fully spent, or at least obligated, by September 30th. And then there were a lot of questions in some of the prior budget subcommittees about the actual, what it was being spent on. So this is how the DESE budget looks. If you look at the original grant budget, those are the categories that we originally planned, and you can always amend your budget. So if you, if you look through it to the final amendment on April 3rd, the amount of the total, the 3.059 million, hasn't changed. Mostly, we're still projecting 1.3 million in instructional professional salaries, and PD has 488,000. So if you look at the very blue columns where we're projected, and the balance, you can see that the only real differences are, right now, we are projecting to spend a bit more on the supply line, about 50,000, but we still have plenty to spend on the stipends PD line and the contracted services line. We can still amend. So if we do spend more on the supply line, as, as long as it's okay with everyone to do, to do that amendment, we'll do that. And as I said, we'll, we're expecting to be fully spent on the SOR III grant.
Just for the, the record, too, you know, when we create the grants, and I know this has been something that you have had in the past, but we're certainly going to bring you the overall grant and the buckets that we're going to spend the money, we plan to spend the money in. And then if there are changes within those buckets, or, you know, we'll come back to you with that, with the understanding that hopefully we'll be able to navigate within kind of the general areas that we have, have budgeted and that's under.
I have just two more things to mention before our question. So when we made this report last week, the year-end is very fluid right now. In fact, like we said, tomorrow is our last day to do things. The city will officially be closing the books on FY24, even though June 30th has been a while, on Thursday. A number of encumbrances have been coming out, so I do expect we have about $80,000 from the encumbrance is alone to put into the circuit breaker carry forward, which will increase that $2.9 million amount. And then depending on what we find with the extended day, we may even be able to increase that a little by using some more of the revolving funds. And when we look forward, the only last thing I was going to mention, when we look forward to these reports next year, ideally what I'd like to do, starting with the first quarter report, is give you a sort of small memo. That may have some of these tables in it, but a more of a narrative, so that you also get a, a narrative that, similar to what I'm talking through now, plus the tables. And then we could also have a PowerPoint in the actual meeting, but that way you'll be seeing a memo that, you know, that'll give some context to. And that's it.
Amory, I just have a question about the grant page. The one that we didn't spend in '23, why does that stay in our budget? Like, why does that add to, that might be, I'm not an accounting person, but the 64 expanded learning that you said we didn't...
Yeah, that won't be available to us. We have to return that.
Just means we're gonna lose it.
Right. It just means we're gonna lose it. But...
Yeah.
Like, why does it show up? This is, so this is what's spent? No. is what's spent? No.
So the original budget was planned on that particular line, the original budget grant was written for 283,000, and then the amount we spent was 218. So we, we had 64. In some cases, that carries forward with federal grants, but in this case-
I understand.
We, we lose it, yeah.
I asked Sean, fast and furious, to take a look at every single budget line grant item. What are we gonna lose? What do we have to shift over to spend it all? And he did a fantastic job kind of going through and identifying it all.
I was not reading this part the right, the correct way, and now I understand. So sorry about that. I think the idea of the narrative addition is, is great.
Thanks.
Because I will also say this, quite impressive to have gone through in just two months to the detail that you've been able to get in there. And thank you. Any other questions for Sean? All right. All right. So we will move on to the next item, which is budget transfers that need our approval.
So we're requesting a small budget transfer. So I should say, this, this transfer that we're requesting is completely within the salary lines of the budget, and the figures you just saw in the final report reflect this transfer. The assistant business manager, Gina Meng, she was, she, she, she thought this would be a good way to report. So we're basically taking budget, we're not doing anything with expenditures, from areas where we spent less and moving it to some areas where we spent more, just to clean up the lines and make, make the way that the budget aligns to what was finally spent at year end within certain salary categories, and looking for your approval to do that transfer.
So?
And then there's an accompanying document that sort of shows some of the areas.
Oh, that's sort of-
Yeah.
Where is that document?
Where is that? I think that one did not make it in.
I don't think that made it in.
If you click on the drive, it's there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Just didn't get linked to the actual agenda.
Yeah. It's a two, it's a three, two or three page document, and it just highlights.
Is this something that could wait until we are able to look at that until the 11th, or no?
It's a very standard, just shift. I'd like to just pull it up really quick.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I can read it to you.
Skip, you can send it.
July, August 27th, yeah.
New business?
Budget. And then budget transfer.
Budget transfer approval.
And then that.
Yeah, it's very-
So you can see, we're just shifting money, we're, we're taking money out of the salary professional full timeline, which is where all of our full year annual, annual salaries go. It could be from attrition or turnover savings. We spent less there, and we spent more in some of the other areas, such as other salaries, which may be substitutes. All, all the lines, like I said, are salary stipends. We spent a little bit more. The total is zero, so we're basically just moving budget money, and the year's over, right?
Yeah.
The year's over. We're just moving budget money so that our report looks a little bit, the budget matches the final year in spending a little bit. But we would like to do the transfer, you know, this week since they're closing the year in munis, if, if possible, if we could get your approval. If we don't have your approval, it just means that some of the lines will look slightly different, but still, it doesn't really change what, what I presented to you because it's all within salaries, which we sort of rolled up.
But it sounds like it'll make things easier to understand later.
That, that's the goal, is to make it easier to understand.
I think what I was just trying to be 100% sure of is if you need our approval.
I looked at the policy when he brought this to me, and it looked like based on that, this one you had to-
Just because of the amount, correct?
I don't remember why now, but it was-
Yeah, we did read the policy.
I think it's the amount. That's why I'm like, I, right off the top of my head, I'm, I didn't remember. I know if it crosses DESI function codes, for sure.
And over a certain amount, right?
The DESI function codes would probably cross here because some things like-
Okay.
Substitutes, or some of these could be like medical salaries, because the function codes don't quite tie exactly to salaries versus expenses.
Right.
Right? They're more like function areas, like instruction, you know. So I think we were just, after reading that, we said, let's get your approval on it. Again, if, if you, if you don't approve it, I don't think it really changes anything.
And when I say function codes, I meant the major ones, like definitely not in like smaller, but if it crosses like a 100 to, you know, 1,000 to 2,000 or something like that, that's-
It may do that based on a few of those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, or over 25,000. That's why I just wanted to double check. Yeah, not a problem with this, oh, within principle. I think there is also a form that generally, and when we've done these, that I've had to sign. So I don't know if that is, usually that's what ends up coming.
And there's more detail on the following page as it gets into the actual accounts and the ups and downs. So that's the real detail.
Yeah, the detail is definitely here. I mean, it's, it's definitely-
I had the form, the budget transfer form, Gina had it, but she was out last week.
Okay.
So I, I built this, you know, which is basically representative of the form. If, if you need to sign it, we can get it to you.
Yeah, it's honestly, it's just a slightly different than we're, than we were used to seeing. The format usually is just the form comes to us, but, but actually, there is usually this kind of a sheet as a backup to the form. So it is all the information that we would usually get. It was just in a little bit of a different format, which is not a bad thing. That's not, not to say we can't change things a little bit going forward. But yes, any other questions on the budget transfers?
No, motion to approve.
Second.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
And then whenever you actually have the, the transfer form, I think, I think Gina has sent me things electronically, but I can certainly come back in and, and sign those if it's something that needs to be done quickly.
Yeah, we can get it to you, sign off on that.
Yeah. If it just, if it needs to be done quickly, I can definitely do that.
Can I appreciate it? It gives, you know, a chance to clean up the accounts from FY24 and actually label them where we spent them.
Yeah. Well, thanks to make sense, that's for sure. Okay, so that brings us to the next item on the agenda is the cost allocation agreement and compensated absences.
Yes, so this, this has been a question mark for you folks for a long time. As you're aware, Tony and our town partners, they develop a compensated absentee budget, which they use free cash to fund. And essentially, it takes a certain amount of free cash, combines the funds to provide for any absences that we are required to pay out based on retirements or, or resignations or, or whatnot. There's a concern that came from the committee about how that fund is going to be replenished over the years. If the current money that we have in our budget is going to have to go to the town, if we're going to have to replenish it on a regular basis if it does, kind of get depleted. So in conversations with both the town manager and our attorney, I have drafted, made modifications to the proposed agreement that town has agreed to, that essentially deals with both of those issues. There's a clause in here now that limits the amount of replenishment that we'll ever have to do based on the anticipated expenditures for any compensated absences we're required to spend. So for example, if we get notice of three retirements for the following year, we know how much that will cost us. We have a year to know what that is. That is the only amount that we would have to replenish into the account on, on the, the following year. There is also two notes in the document that now say that we are able to, if there's disagreement over this agreement, to be able to pull ourselves out of the agreement and, and budget ourselves again for the following year. So to be honest, the actual, the agreement, it's all based on how we're reporting to destiny at the end of the year. So it's, in my mind, not, not a big, big deal, but I think at least this will give you the opportunity to feel comfortable with going into the agreement and having that process go. So I'll pop that document open here, too, so you can, geez, this is hard to see.
So I know it's both, just a comment, I, I know I'm gonna lose this fight, and I know I've already lost this fight. So I will say it, just for the sake, because I know it's going to get approved, thank you for your work. I just, I don't feel comfortable with doing this. The town still hasn't presented or explained to me and how I understand the school side budget, the long-term benefit of this. I recognize that there are audits that take place and that the town can lose points because of, you know, a certain amount of debt you hold with that. I understand that. But, but again, to explain to people, town and school budgets are apples and oranges. The teacher retirement system that administrators are part of as well is private. It takes our money. It, it's a separate entity, so I, I understand there are sometimes costs when it's related to like retirement and benefits. But again, I will point to a couple of years ago when there was a retirement and there was a $50,000 payout on the town side. We, we don't have that. And it's the way the contracts are set up. It's that if a teacher retires, like, this happened 20 years ago, where the state and, and districts began to limit the amount that you can buy back for sick time. So like, I, I get that this is a good thing, but this feels like to me that we're ceding away some of our authority for the sake of it. So I, I understand the work, but I'm just not convinced and I'm uncomfortable with, with doing it. So I am opposed to the compensated absences piece, but I, I just wanted to, I thank you for your work. I understand, but I, I just wanted to, to share that, so. So I'll move to approve it for sake of discussion.
Is there a second for the sake of discussion?
A second.
I definitely have a discussion. So when this first happened, I was, as part of budget balancing and every other budget thing in the town that I'm a part of, thought it was a great idea. I'm like, great, we can have this money back in our budget. It was definitely about as clear as mud when it first came out, how it was going to benefit us at all, right? We've gone back and forth many, many times on, on why we should even do this. I absolutely understand from the town's perspective, and because we are part of the town, and I argued that fact in, in a couple of different meetings, that the compensated absences fund helps with the, you know, total liability of the town, helps with our credit rating, et cetera, et cetera. And it did, it did not seem like it would hurt us at all to, to join it. What I'm, one of the things that came up during those discussions was obviously not only how to, how to fund it, which is a small piece, because that part really doesn't seem to be spelled out, like every year, town meeting will put or anything like that. There's no spell out like that. So I do, I do actually appreciate that we would only ever be on the hook for what our actual retirement costs are, which is what we're budgeting now anyway. So that does make me more comfortable with it. The other piece was around, you know, potentially, you know, some sort of an M O A to make sure that we never lose our authority to, but to negotiate with our unions over those, those amounts. Because that's, that is part of the problem, that we want to make sure we're not ceding our authority there, because now that the fund doesn't live under us anymore. And we don't have, we just basically, and all I keep hearing is, it's just a mechanism to pay out. It's just a mechanism to pay out. Well, to this administration, to the people in town hall right now, it's just a button they press when the person retires and pays it out. I'm wondering if the clause here, that if a disagreement arises, that we can back out of it, covers us in that instance. And so, you know, that if somewhere down the line, the town tries to, to limit our ability to give certain amounts in contracts, that that's when we could say, well, well, then we're out. So I guess that's my, my only concern. That's still remaining and that, you know, where, I apologize for not asking these questions beforehand, but if, you know, if this has been in consult with, with Melissa, is that anything that she is still concerned with? Because we have definitely brought that up before.
She was not. She, I mean, when I spoke to Melissa, it was based on your concerns, what the town was looking to do. And there's two pieces of language in here based on that. And this really says, if any disagreement arises between the town regarding its allocation, the parties agree that we reestablish our own. I will say that your authority to, to negotiate your contracts is your authority. The town manager actually has a seat on your negotiating committee, so be it if they want to come, right? They can do that and be part of that anyway. So they can share what funds are out there and all that. And our duty is to have, in good faith, have enough money to bargain in that first year, whatever contract it is, which includes the, the, the shared costs, right, for, or the costs for absences. So I do not believe it takes your authority away. The town as a whole has an obligation to fund what you negotiate with your, with your units, and therefore they have an obligation to fund that if that's part of one of our agreements. So in terms of that side, I think you're okay. Melissa was okay with this language, very much so. She actually added the language on the, to the whole, unable to be able to agree, going to the Department of Education, too. So you have authority to go through them, and you have the authority to actually back out whenever there's disagreement. So I think if you said, hey, we can't negotiate for ourselves anymore, you're not letting us do this, we're just going to back out and budget ourselves again.
And that's honestly the kind of the language I, in the absence of an actual M O A, which a lot of times isn't worth the paper it's written on, what would, is there a mechanism to be able to, you know, again, to, you know, go back to the way we've been doing it in the first place? I mean, I do-
That's what this is, right?
Yeah, yeah. But, yes, very simply and basically, yeah.
The lawyers looked at it, everybody's gonna sign it.
If there is a disagreement, we can back out and do it ourselves.
If it, if we don't like it and it stops working for us, we just go back to the way it was, it sounds like.
Yep. It's a matter of budgeting.
Because it's signed here. And I mean, if, if Melissa looked at it, I, I feel confident in that it, this holds, and I think it's worth trying to have that in our budget again, just because we know what we're going into, position, or, you know, or it's support that we're very likely going to need. And if it doesn't work out-
Then we go back.
Then we go back.
Which would be no sweat on our back at all, because we know what we budget for every year and-
Right.
That's right. That's right.
Okay.
Is this motion to approve the cost allocation form or to agree?
This motion is to approve the town of Norwood and Norwood Public Schools' cost allocation agreement.
With the addition, yeah, with the addition of the compensated absences. I think that was the clarification for you, that you were, I think you might have just said compensated absences, right? Okay. And that is okay? That, that clarification is okay with your second?
Yes.
Wait, sorry, what was he clarifying?
So the, the motion on the table is to actually approve the entire cost allocation agreement, including the additional compensated absences language?
Yes. A second.
All right. Any other discussion? Falls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Two to one. Three people that can get ugly. Again, I would just ask, not as a motion, just that we are very careful to, I mean, we, we look at this every year, but to, you know, very much evaluate whether this is working for us and whether it's something we really need to be doing. Because again, on the, like I said, I'll say it again, on the, this is what I argued for when I came, brought it to the committee in the first place, when I found out about it, was that, you know, we are part of the town. We do get the benefit of projects approved, middle school, you know, things like that. We, we do, we do use bonds and, and our bond rating as a town in this district. So it is going to benefit us to have a better credit rating and less liability, however.
Agreed. Agreed. Well, I think it also opens up some funding for next fiscal year, too.
Yep.
So to shift monies to support some of the other issues.
Okay. All right. So that is moving on to the next item. We're going to old business. And the first item there is the elementary study update.
Yeah, I'm gonna hand it to Superintendent Luff pretty quickly, but I did just want to say that probably a lot of you saw his welcome message, including an update on the survey materials for the elementary study and how we're gathering input. So that message went out through Parent Square and on our social media pages to the community for folks to participate in a thought exchange survey so that we can have robust community input. We are also having a, a community forum on September 14th at 10 a.m. at the Bulge School. It's possible, we're, we're talking just recently about adding an evening potentially if the weekend is, is tricky. So stay tuned for that. We will certainly update folks on that. And I think that there's a staff, staff listening session happening as well according to the, the timeline. So that's all I have, but I, if you want to expand on the thought exchange or anything else.
You did, you did great. You hit most of, just about all of it, which is fantastic. Just, I, I want to let the community know again that, you know, when the thought exchange and the survey results come in, you are likely not going to have any kind of a recommendation to you on timeline for process and all those things. I'm going to be looking for a recommendation on the actual structure, educational structure that you're looking at, right? So are you looking for a K through four elementary model? Are you looking for a continued kindergarten and a one-
Are you looking for a continued kindergarten and a one to four model? Those are the kind of things that I'm going to ask you for. And what kind of lines do you want drawn, based on the different pieces that are there? Obviously, we're working in depth with the Special Education Department, Transportation Department, ELL Department, all those different areas, facilities, to identify which one of those models would have an impact. But I would like to know what your educational vision is first, model-wise, and then I will go through and work with all those folks on what the logistics are behind the process. So to see if it's actually feasible to implement within a year, right, or we have to wait another year. So I anticipate coming back to you in two to three weeks after that, saying, now that you've chosen the educational model that you feel is appropriate, here's what it would take to get that done, here's my recommendation for the timeline. None of that's going to happen until every single parent's feedback or community member's feedback is in and solved, and I think, like I said, the survey closes on October 10.
Yeah, it closes at the end of October. And then we're meant to vote on the model, the 30th, I believe. So then, it sounds like you're saying you'd have some time to put together, from an operational standpoint, what a timeline would look like.
That's right.
And that's in the context of everything that's going on with the middle school and just all of the moving pieces.
You have quite a few initiatives happening in Norwood right now, and, you know, so I do have on my mind, when you have so many things going on, you want to be able to do everything well. If you have too much going on sometimes, they're just done okay. And you have an opening of a brand-new middle school, you know, we do, and I want to make sure that that's done right. So, again, we'll see what you decide on, and then we'll look at logistics from there. But I will tell you, the thought exchange, I think, since I've opened it back up, we had more than, I think, 60 that I saw, new results come in. We had additional 20 or 30 folks that had done the original survey, that have gone in just to do the exchange of ideas, because you can do it back and forth in the ideas, and it's coming together really good. It'll go out again in a newsletter, probably on Friday.
From principals?
Oh, for me and from principals.
Okay.
I'll do an additional newsletter here coming up soon. There was an idea to split the video into two, so you have where my introduction section is at the beginning, to just have a split, so you can start at the elementary study project area, so it's quicker to follow through. And it should be broadcasted in NCM at some point here, too. So lots of time to get the information out and get the information in, and I feel like we'll have a good understanding from the community. And by the way, what I am seeing so far is there's no agreement, right? There's these, there's these positives and, you know, strengths and weaknesses, this kind of thing, and they're all over the place. So the community is definitely, I won't say broken, but has to have different opinions on what they want. So it'll be interesting to see what happens when school starts, families and community members are still more engaged and they start really responding. So more to come, but nothing happens until we get feedback from the community.
Excellent. Good. Thank you.
All righty. Moving on to our next item is the capital outlay warrant article memo.
Mr. Man, you already talked much about this. This is the five additional mini buses due to increasing demand that we've had over the course of this last year. Obviously, we've gone from 203 students requiring transportation, specialized transportation in vans or mini buses to 311 a year. There's no spare, so this is why we brought to you the idea that we'd have these five mini buses in the capital article, requesting $545,000 to purchase these vans, or these mini buses, that will take anywhere from 12 to 18 months to actually get delivered once we order. There was a question at one of our last meetings about having to vote on a warrant article for this, as you did in the spring for some vans, that is not going to be, it's not going to be a separate article, there's not going to be a separate warrant article for this. It's actually as part of the whole from the capital outlay committee, so it's part of one of many that will be presented by that committee. So you do not need to vote on a separate warrant article, but I do want to get your formal vote on the $545,000 to put on that, just so we have that formally done tonight. As Sean also mentioned, the $209,000, the town knows they're going to have that conversation at town meeting and prior to this, that $209,000, although it might actually go back into free cash, we are considering that as part of the total that we're asking for, because I did not want us to seem like we were not using the money that was already provided to us. There were just questions about whether it can be used for a new warrant article when it was part of the last one, even though they're both for transportation. So that will be addressed, that we are considering it, and really, the total cost is something more so around $300,000 and a change, rather than $545,000 that we're asking for. I am asking for you for $545,000 approval for FY25 fall town meeting capital warrant article.
Move, ah, no, I would like to motion to approve $545,000 to be placed on the FY25 Fall Town Meeting Capital Warrant Article to fund the five additional mini buses in FY25.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, questions?
No.
All is in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes three to zero. That will bring us right to the next item, which we are going to breeze through, because I'm not going to go into it very much. The next item is, as part of our school committee policies and procedures, we will review the long-term agenda at least once per month. So in your packets, you do have the long-term agenda linked. I think it has been filled out pretty decently for the next couple of months. We still have some things coming up, probably after October, where we have some spaces. I would say there's probably where we might be putting some metals, elementary study items. We would also, I think we have quarterly updates, we do, oh, we have right there, MSPC is right there in September, so probably not, I think we might have filled those all in, but I'm not 100% sure, but some of those will need to be filled in there for the quarterly updates from that.
So my only question is, as we look at this for September, and I know we had talked about this earlier, so can we try to make September 25th the budget meeting? Like, I know we had talked about maybe, and I don't know, as Sean gets acquainted, like, I know, Tim, you had suggested, yeah, like, try to alternate, and also just for time, where maybe the first one in September is more policy, and the 25th is more budget, but...
We can definitely try to do that. I don't see why we can't try that cadence. I think we'll all, budget being such an important part of what we do-
It's always-
There's always going to be something, but you're right, the big budget presentations, like we did tonight-
Yeah.
We wouldn't try to cram that all into-
So could we switch the budget subcommittee from the 11th to the 25th?
I think we'll always have subcommittee updates, just as a quick, brief, this is what we talked about, but just because if we had a meeting, it would probably be easier to give an update closer to, yeah, closer to when we did it. I think that, well, yeah, budget and policy, we'll probably all see on most every agenda, at least for the update, the subcommittee update portion of it.
For example, we'll actually talk about the policy subcommittee, but not in detail tonight, because we're actually going to have that more detailed in the next meeting on the 11th.
But I think that is going to be the attempt.
Okay.
And I think that's easier for digesting the information as well. Like, if you're kind of like all geared up for budget, you're all geared up for budget. I think there might be an opportunity for a budget-related policy to sneak in there on those nights, because obviously, if they go together, that might be a good time to do that, but I don't think we have any other-
I need to go in and look at, like, and talk to Tim about, like, the times, like, and estimate, because we'll need information on feedback before we vote on the 30th, obviously. So, like, for each of those updates, and then also in policy, to his point, it's, some of them will be short, but would it be helpful if we, you know, kind of estimated, like, okay, this is going to be a 20-minute thing versus a five-minute thing?
Yeah, no, definitely, would be helpful if that was in there. Okay.
Quarter 16, that would be the quarter one, right? It says end of year report update.
Probably is quarter one. I think I was pulling from pre-last year, and, yeah, last year was late.
You're already ahead of the end.
What's that?
You're already ahead of the end.
Yes, exactly.
I think one of the things you'll see in September, too, is I have to get my head around the student service RFP, right? So I'll bring some ideas coming up in September for how we're going to do that.
September 25th?
Sure.
Listen, this meeting is going, it was, I got to say, we had a pretty lengthy agenda, and we're doing quite well.
Because they're short, like, just the little sections.
Yeah, there's definitely going to be some bigger ones coming up, definitely, for sure.
My last question, are we expecting any visitors September 11th? Like, any appearances, or does it now, no?
I don't think so, unless we want to, unless you plan on bringing anybody in for the opening update.
I don't, I don't, yes.
Okay.
I don't.
An elementary subcommittee, we're probably not going to have anybody appearing.
We're tortured, don't we?
No, the, Samborn will be at the forum, but I don't think we need them, I mean, I wouldn't, unless it's requested.
The only appearance, the only thing that, I'm just thinking, spitballing, that with the capital outlay update, I have to double-check, there were a couple of school-related facilities we do have to put on here, I don't think we have our quarterly facilities updates, so we'll have to get those on here. And then those items that were school-related facilities, technically, we're supposed to get those presented to us and vote on those, but I think, just forgetting off the top of my head, if we actually already, because one of them is like the Savage Parking Lot, pretty sure we voted on that last year, it got bumped.
In the spring.
And so we already voted on it, but it just got bumped, but-
Great.
So those, that might be some, that might be a single appearance.
Excellent, okay, I'm done.
All right, any other questions on the long-term agenda? And obviously, I did get this question before, and you can see, I don't know why you're not getting the, that where it says add, you should just be able to add comments on the side of the agenda are perfectly acceptable, please do do that. It's, it was a question on whether that was something I wanted, and yes, please.
Great.
All right, so then we can move on to the next item, and that is policy. So there's a policy subcommittee update, Ms. Sevington and Ms. Stoll.
Yeah, so in line with Tim's memo, we met, it was actually August 20th, right? Yeah.
August?
Yeah, we met August 20th.
Oh, my goodness.
Briefly, without Joan, but we went with Lisa and we did some planning, we talked a lot about Title IX, there's some things sort of up in the air going on in the state that we're looking at. And so for September 11th, you guys should expect to have some reviewed red lines policies that will be recommended. We are meeting again the week before we meet next. We're just waiting to confirm that with Joan, once she's, once we can get, when she's in town. So we're meeting the week of the 27th, I think. I know, that's this week, hello, sorry.
I think the goal is the afternoon of the 3rd.
Afternoon of the 3rd, potentially.
After publication.
Yeah, so.
You can tell we're all coming off a summer mood here right now.
Yeah, definitely, people are in town, things are happening. I think that was it, though, just that was the main headline, is that there will be stuff. And then we kind of are looking at how we're going to also triage, for lack of a better word, our LTA and then our long-term agenda, and fold it into our business meeting, LTA. So that's it. Anything else, Tim?
Just that on the Title IX front, obviously, there was new regulations that were put into place on August 1st. You don't have new policies on those yet, those are the ones that we'll be reviewing at the next meeting. However, any occurrence that happened prior to August 1st, we are still required to use the current policies and the previous laws. So there's a situation where you could have two policies being in play at the same time, so you'll approve these new policies hopefully in the future, however, the previous policies would still be in effect for anything that happened prior to August 1st. Melissa Murray actually did some training with our administrators at our retreat, she came, and she talked about the new changes and updated pieces of Title IX. So even if something does occur, just because it's not in policy as of the moment, we will still follow the legal requirements to do that, and our administrators have been trained in doing so now. One part of the delay is, again, I think Ms. Sevington mentioned, there are some challenges across the country related to new regulations, and therefore, we're just kind of waiting that out a little bit, and then we'll, probably the beginning of next meeting, we'll get those out to you, and we'll get them in place.
That's it. Any other questions from Pauls? Great, all right, we'll move right on. I just don't know, just move. So next item on our agenda is the update on the employee handbook.
So this handbook is something that was created last year, and it was presented to the blue policy subcommittee, and I believe to you as well at the school committee, I had just updated it to incorporate staffing changes, modifications to current laws, district policies and regulations. In the past, there were particular links in there to, for example, the digital policies that went to the entire policy handbook. So it's like any staff member that opened a link to go to a specific policy would go to everything. So now I have directly linked the specific policies that have been referenced in the handbook, so if you, if it says it's going to be the use policy, digital use policy, it's going to bring you right there, which is really nice. So, but I also should share that I added the civil rights handbook to the end of the policy, along with your entire policy manual, it's linked separately, that actually says it's going to the actual policy manual and/or the civil rights piece, so it actually directs staff to go into those locations. And I'll open it up in just a second, but I do want to share that ARX Ed, which is the program that we're using for our mandatory training now for all of our staff, will go out, start tomorrow, so I'm really looking forward to having your approval on this tonight, because this is part of the training, where staff will, when they get into their buildings, they'll be given time by their principals to go through and actually have a kind of engaging video tutorial of verba or special ed requirements, or bloodborne pathogens, or all those other mandatory requirements that are there, and they'll sign conflict of interest, and they'll sign off right in the system that they reviewed that, and it'll be there. So hoping to have your approval tonight on this handbook, which will be modified more so next year, because I think it needs more to it, but I do want to have this out to the staff tomorrow or Thursday. But as you can just see, it's the overview, the non-discrimination policy, compensation practices, which are, and employment benefits, what your HR department went through as well, and we made sure we're up to speed and up to date, professional development opportunities, time off practices, they have MLA language, general employment practices, and more. So I will take any questions you have about the handbook, hoping you had a chance to take a look at it last year and then this time around, too.
And so just for clarification, so that, like you just said, this will be part of a rollout to the entire staff through the OX program, so we are sure everyone's getting it and there's-
Everyone gets it and they sign off, they reviewed, yeah.
Okay, I think, you know, for, you know, as we know, there's, the employee handbook is not new, it's not brand-new this year, but there was a mixed rollout, we'll call it, last year. So that's great. Any questions on the handbook?
No.
Motion to approve the handbook.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes three to zero.
I will say thank you, and I also spoke with our union leadership about the handbook, so we got feedback on for them as well, so feeling pretty good about it moving into next year.
I assume that was the case, because I wasn't getting daggers. All right, so on to the next item, the extended day MOU.
Okay. So last meeting, I shared with you that our MOU with the town for the extended day program was very stringent about any changes to the program after it went over to the town, as it has now, which included not allowing to have any early release day scheduling for our kids. I felt that that was, you know, the, the program directors came to me and talked to me about that, and I felt like we needed to update the MOU just to be able to incorporate that. So I talked to Tony quickly about this, too. This is a very simple change, and so what I'm requesting to, for you tonight, has actually authorized me to work with Tony and to sign off on an MOU, a change on the post-transition activities pieces, which essentially says that we will now, this section, it does not restrict the rec. department from establishing early release day programming, as long as their equitable service is provided, right? We made sure that was in there, so all can participate. And as I shared with you before, that might mean having extended programming for all elementary schools, or piloting it with one school or two schools for one early release, and then the other schools for another, so everyone at least has an equal amount of opportunity to have the programming, and obviously, making sure there's space available for the programming to happen and staffing, which would be a conversation with the principals- and staffing, which would be a conversation with the principals to make sure the building's available and locations are there. Also added a section about communications. What was not in the MOU anywhere was the ability for us to communicate with the after-school providers, to make sure that if a student is having a difficult time for whatever reason, medical attention, that kind of a thing, that we would be able to do that. So in this, this change or this amendment, I just have in here that the extended day program will get consent from parents for us to be able to do that and have those conversations. And rather than this going back to both committees, Tony and I are requesting that you allow, you allow me the authorization to sign off on this, this agreement, and he'd sign off as well.
Any questions on this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Not many options for motions and seconds when there's only three of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was just, Anne Marie, going to say that it's appreciated, it's an improvement, and you had given us a heads up about this, I believe, at our July meeting, that you were working on this, so...
Yeah, we had had the town come to us quite a while ago and say that they wanted to work on this, and it was, it was definitely, I don't want to say an oversight, but it was like, I don't think it was, it was certainly not something that we were, wanted, you know, never to have early dismissal days. I don't think that, you've heard Joan plenty of times, talk about, you know, the, the lack of early dismissal day coverage that we used to get when we were here in the Savage Building, so I think this is, any, any move towards getting those half-days covered at all through the school year will be something parents will be very appreciative of.
Yeah, I think it's, it's good for kids, too.
Yep.
Appreciate this.
All right. All right, so moving on to the next item, approval of MOUs with Unit A, Unit B, and Food Services. Do you want to take this one, or?
I'll give it to you, Terry Mitchell, if you like. I've been long-winded so far today.
So we're happy to report that we have settled our contracts with Unit A, Unit B, and our Food Services departments. So this evening, we are looking for approval for the MOUs that cover all of the changes that were agreed upon by both the School Committee and those unions. We did meet an executive session before this meeting just to make sure that there were no outstanding questions on those union contracts or the MOUs that were being presented to us. There were not, so now we are here in open session to approve those. If we could take those individually for the record, would probably be the best way to, to do that. So unless there are any other questions, do I have any motion to approve the Unit A contract? Or you, Unit A MOU, excuse me?
Motion to approve the Unit A contract.
MOU.
MOU.
Second.
Of course, I would be...
I know, we're going to keep doing that.
I won't do it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the Unit B MOU.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to approve the meal ser, sorry, meal, food service, MOU.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And can I, go ahead.
Just to thank you to all the teams on all sides of the aisle, so to speak, for the diligent work. I know it's a process, a hard, hard, long process, so thank you.
I was just going to say that I wanted to thank the association memberships, all three, for the incredible work they did. I think that the relationships that we have to be able to negotiate and to finalize these contracts, to really provide, I think, the teachers and the Food Association and, and the administrators, all, I think, a workplace that's going to be filled with not just joy of teaching students, but also something that compensates them for the hard work that they do every day is really important. So, you know, not everyone in negotiations get everything that they want, it's a consensus-based kind of decision-making process, and I think that the School Committee and the, you know, and on our side gave a bit and took a bit, and then they did this, they did the same. So it was a back and forth, but I think you have some really great contracts and we use in place that's going to survive and, and help build a big relation, a good relationship with them in the future. So thank you for everyone, appreciate it.
All right, next item on our agenda is update on meal prices. Mr. Mannion.
So we're requesting a vote on, there's a memo that's included, on our meal prices, the HHFK, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, if you read the memo. It says that we need to set our meal prices for the, let me read it again, for, compare the weighted average price charged for lunches served to students not eligible for free or reduced lunches to the difference between the higher federal reimbursement provided for the free lunches and the lower federal reimbursement paid for paid lunches. So we're a universally free district. The federal free reimbursement for students that would have been eligible for free or reduced price is 433. The paid federal reimbursement rate for paid lunches is 48 cents, and the difference between those, so the difference that the, the federal government is making up is 385. We're, our weighted average here, which we only charge for the second meal, because it's, the state makes up that difference, is 301. So the act basically says that we need to increase our price, this weighted average, to approach what that federal weighted average is. It really doesn't change anything for the program. I've talked to Elay about, about this, because we're universally free and the state is picking up the difference between the paid and the federal amount, it doesn't really change anything for the program, but we do need to vote on the new prices in order to be in accordance with the act. So if you read down in the memo, we have proposed prices that are going to incrementally increase this weighted average over the next three years, and then we also have prices for breakfast to, that'll kind of match that increase over the next three years. Mostly, this will impact the second lunches, because the, these will be the charges we, we pay, which we really don't do too many of at the moment, so...
All right, so just to clarify, so this is to vote on an increase, basically, a schedule of increase over the next three years, so we'd be going in FY, for this school year, we'd be going from 301 to 326.
Yeah.
So essentially, just the folks playing the home game, a 20, a 25, a 25 cent increase for those who are getting a second lunch only, is that correct?
Remember, that's the weighted average, so what we're actually proposing is the elementary goes from 275 to 3 for the paid.
Okay, yeah.
And the secondary...
So 20, 25 cents.
Yeah, we're basically going up 25 cents per year on each, each, each meal.
Is the second, the second meal.
The second meal. I'm only saying, and I'm only clarifying because I know that there's somebody tomorrow, it's going to be on one of our lovely Norwood Facebook pages, that we're increasing lunch, and oh my God, isn't it free? It's, it's still a free lunch.
Exactly.
It's if a child gets a second meal in addition to their free one, it would be going up 25 cents than what it currently is.
Accounting part of the program is you have to...
And you have to set a price every year to, yeah, and it's, it's just mandated that we set the price, and it does, it has to be in accordance with the, the range that the federal government and states say it should be in. Okay, any other questions on this?
Motion to approve the increase according to the new act.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Three to zero. Thank you for that. All right, next.
This is just a quick update on Facilities MOU, so obviously, every year, there's supposed to be a review of the Joint Facilities MOU between the School Department and the town. I did talk to Mr. Mizuko about this a bit, you know, and I've had a conversation with the Facilities Director as well as, as all the departments, and currently, the way the Facilities MOU is working is working well, right? There's a lot of, with Paul Riccardi in place, there's a lot of good strategies that we're using for the principals to be able to be accountable to the custodians and all those kind of things and how we're working through things. So the plan is to have myself, Mr. Mizuko, and a member of the committee sit down and possibly just kind of review the MOU, just to make sure we're dotting our Ts and crossing our, dotting our Is and crossing our Ts, in terms of, you know, naming and all those kind of things that are in place. So my proposal here would be to have the chair, myself, Mr. Mizuko, possibly, and somebody else from Mr. Mizuko's board to kind of sit down and just take a look at it, a quick review, and just to make sure that we're, we're all online, so...
Do you want one of us on that, too? Yes, you said...
Just one member of the committee, you just kind of have a quick, kind of informal, kind of, you know, meeting to kind of discuss it and make sure that we're, we're in line with the, the arrangement, so.
Can we just double-check that, because I'm just not looking at it right in front of me, the, the MOU does not say, because last year, we did two members of each board.
Just see what they...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not, that it doesn't spell it out, that it's supposed to be two members of each board, so it was Kate and I. You don't remember that?
I don't.
Actually, we didn't, actually, we, it's stipulated, it is stipulated in the MOU that it's supposed to happen by June. Obviously, we were in a lot of projects this past June, so it definitely did not happen. So we actually met the previous June, so it's been about a year and a half since we did that.
Oh, it's been a year and a half.
When we, when we met with Ms. Donahue and Mr. Plasko, I think, were the two members from the Board of Selectmen. And so, yeah, I just would, I would just ask that you double-check the language and make sure that it doesn't need to be two, because I just don't have it in front of me.
So would that, who would that be if it was the two?
I mean, I'm certainly happy to do it again, I don't know, we might do it. You would do it again?
Sure.
There you go.
So if we need one, I'll have you come, if we need two, we'll have...
Okay, sounds great.
I'll sort you something, great. Thank you.
And we did make some, we did make some changes with, when Kate and I did it, so I do think that things are much better. There was a lot of things that, when it was initially put into place, that seemed to be questions, concerns, that just kind of never made it into that final MOU, and we did take care of quite a few of those when we got together last, so hopefully, it will be just a very quick check.
And that makes sense, because what I've heard from the administration and everyone else, that it's, is running very smoothly right now, so, that's good.
That is in no small part to the fact that our Facilities Department is fantastic, and that is me shamelessly plugging them.
I have learned that.
And Mr. Riccardi and all of his, and all the custodians in our buildings are fabulous, and we'll just keep saying that over and over again, because they're fabulous. All right.
It's true.
It is true. They don't get enough recognition. All right, so that does bring us to consent agenda. What do we have this evening, Mr. Shaw?
Generous donations by the Bay State Textiles for July rebate in the amount of $652.20, and the Eckhart Foundation has generously donated 72 filled backpacks for our students coming in this year, so looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, accept both of those donations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so that brings us to School Committee addenda. Kate, do you have anything this evening?
I don't, just good luck to all the parents wrapping up the loose summer vibes. I know they're loose at my house. We're looking forward to being back at school, speaking for myself. No, we're excited, and just enjoy the remaining bits.
I have nothing.
I will only just echo my colleague that I'm excited for school to start myself. I think if you could tell, the, the meeting, I was a little halty in places, even right now, because I need some more structure in my life, so I need, I need school to start. Welcome back to everybody who's coming back, welcome back to the teachers and the students and, and our staff and all, all the building staff, and looking forward to a fabulous school year. Yeah, and that is all I have. So miraculously, and we do not need to go into executive session after this meeting, so this is actual adjournment. I do need...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. And I, I don't think I've ever done this without an executive session, I think I still need to poll individually. No?
No.
Oh, my goodness. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, September 11th, and we will be here in the Savage Center. Thank you very much.